Hi, good evening, everybody. This is the City Council meeting for the city of Bonny Lake for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let's all stand, salute plaque.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll hold the key.
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Baron Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeanman. Councilmember Swatman.
He's here.
Yeah. He's virtual, uh, Sal Swatman's present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Oh, I can read that, Madam Clerk, but you don't know everybody like the back of your hand.
I try not to.
All right, I believe we have a modification in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? To change the consent agenda.
It's to remove item I.
To remove item I.
That was to remove item I.
Cancellation of the January second. All right, all in favor of removing item I from the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, item I is removed. And it's going to the full council, meaning that tonight, okay, we have two public hearings tonight, Madam Clerk, could you...
This public hearing is on AB two-three-one-nineteen, ordinance B two-three-one-nineteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, adopting the mid-biennial budget amendment for budget years two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four.
All right, I believe this is about public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. This is your time to address the council on the item under the public hearing that is just read. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record when called upon. Anybody can, uh, will come up from the sign-up sheet. And if we have anybody video, has anybody from the video, um, said anything? Okay, going once, going twice. Mr. Decker, are you here to speak on this particular item?
I'm here to speak on the item.
Okay.
Council Mayor Dan Dekker, as Councilmember of two-hundred-and-seventy-second East Lake, Washington. Remember one important thing about money and inflation, you cannot buy your way out of spend. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I will now close the public hearing for AB two-three-one-one-nine. Madam Clerk, could you please read the second public hearing?
This public hearing is on AB two-three-one-twenty, ordinance B two-three-one-twenty, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad verorum act levy necessary for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak on this item?
Council Mayor. Council Mayor Dan Dekker, as Councilmember of two-hundred-and-seventy-second East Lake, Washington, wish to state that, remember, you cannot buy your way out of or spend your way out of inflation. The more money you spend, the more inflation you have. Thank you very much.
Okay, then, Mr. Decker, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I will now close the hearing for AB two-three-one-twenty. We will now go on to citizen commentary. This is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those standing virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and then move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, New York Council. This is Erin Muskie from your library, the Bonny Lake Pierce County Library.
Aye.
Hello, I'm coming to give you a couple of updates, um, what to do with outreach that we have going on. Um, the first is that our Friends of the Bonny Lake Library Book Sale is going on. It is starting this Thursday and going on Friday and Saturday as well. So, um, if you didn't know, the Friends supports what the library does. They support our programs, our services, and outreach that we do to the community. So, the proceeds from their book sale are a big part of that. Um, they are pairing their book sale with a drive for the market. I probably have heard of the Golden Gobble Challenge that's going on throughout the community for Thanksgiving. So, we are also collecting cream of mushroom soup to give to the market during the book sale as well. Um, our hours for that, Thursday, it's going to be eleven to six, and Friday and Saturday, eleven to five. The other thing I want to mention is a little bit further off on the horizon, but it's something that is, um, really close to my heart. Um, I am bringing a program to the region that is the Sumner Bonny Lake and Buckley Libraries called Valentine's for Veterans. Um, this is a program that I started at Library Systems when I worked in Florida and Texas, and I'm really proud to be bringing it here. Um, in the month of January, from January eighth to twenty-sixth, each of those three libraries is going to have a card-making station set up in the library. Um, people are welcome to come in and make their card. If they know a veteran, they have a friend or family member who can take that card with them, but if they don't, or if they prefer to leave it at the library, we are partnering with three different organizations in East Pierce County that serve veterans. One of them is the Veterans Village in Ording, which is a tiny home village for previously unhoused veterans. One of them is the Washington Soldiers' Home, also in Ording. And the third one is the American Legion Post sixty-seven located out in Puyallup. So, uh, between the first and seventh of February, we hope to have a few hundred cards to be able to deliver out to those three organizations so they can get them in the hands of the veterans at the time for Valentine's. And like I said, I'm just so happy to be able to be bringing that to our community so that we can, um, share and outpouring of support. Uh, one thing that I've heard from doing this previously is that there is a lot of recognition for veterans around this time of year with Veterans Day, but maybe less so at other times of year. So, it's an opportunity to share that appreciation at a particular time of year as well. And that is my quick little update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Aaron. I think we all look forward to it. Okay, that's for the, uh, for the order.
Council Mayor Dan Dekker, as Councilmember of two-hundred-and-seventy-second East Lake, Washington. Fluoride, when is fluoride? To begin with, fluoride is considered a drug by the FDA and the EPA by no legitimate reason to put poisonous fluoride in our drinking water. Fluoride does weaken bones and legaments, causes muscle weakness and nervous system dysfunction. Most importantly, fluoride does severe damage to the brain. Fluoride makes users docile, damages the pineal gland, damages brain nerve system, lowers IQ and causes rot. Hey, wait a minute, causes rot to the teeth? Yeah, it does. Fluoride is a highly toxic drug causing neurotoxicity. It's more harmful to the brain than lead. The government wants this poisonous fluoride in our water. The most important factor about containers, fluoride come in is to have the word poison and a picture of skull and crossbones on the container. Adolf Hitler, you know that guy? I won't say the words I'm thinking. Adolf Hitler learned from his chemist that fluoride does wonders for the human personality. Fluoride, as mentioned, destroys the pineal gland and causes humans become more easily controlled. Drinking fluoride can kill. Take a little more than the safety drinking level of fluoride and it may kill you. There is no safe drinking level of fluoride. Council, why do you allow fluoride in the Tacoma drinking water that the city buys from Tacoma? Bonny Lake water test results, resulated in the treatment plant. Fluoride, point seven-six parts per million treatment additive, two thousand and twenty-two. Fluoride, point eight-nine parts per million treatment additive, two thousand and twenty-one, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And as I read on, it would be just more fluoride additives. Treatment additive, what does that mean? Who is adding fluoride to our water? Is this part per million in all of Bonny Lake drinking water? We know Tacoma has a program to make its citizens docile by adding fluoride to its drinking water. What is Bonny Lake doing with fluoride in our water bought from Tacoma? Back in two thousand and two through two thousand and five, the city council worked to stop fluoride from being in our drinking water. Councilmember Dan Swatman was on the council back then. Thank you for your hard work, Councilman Swatman, for helping us remove fluoride from our water back then. Why is the city allowing fluoride in our drinking water from Tacoma? Or it can be removed from our drinking water? I'm really curious about the fact that there is fluoride in our drinking water, and I'm really concerned about what treatment additive means. Does that mean that the city of Bonny Lake is putting fluoride in our water now or is coming from the Tacoma water plant where the Tacoma water and Bonny Lake water is co-mingling? I sure hope it's not a co-mingle issue, and I'm really, really hoping it's not something that the city of Bonny Lake is doing, adding poison to our water. Thank you very much, Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Uh, is there anybody else from the, uh, the order?
I normally don't speak. My name is Troy Fullerton, married to Councilwoman Fullerton. Well, now, good. And I just want to add to that because I was talking to Dan about the issue of fluoride, and I'm talking to my naturopath because my naturopath always got water from a company called Mountain Mist, even getting it delivered for the last almost twenty years, ever since I've been dealing with some health issues. And Mountain Mist, I just got a phone for thirty minutes with them, and they said Mountain Mist has no fluoride at all. It only clean water. He says, unlike the city of Tacoma water, he said, they add the water. And then I researched Tacoma, and they do add fluoride into the water ever since nineteen-eighty-nine. They've been adding it. So, it is an additive that they're putting in and should not be in the water. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fullerton. Is there anybody else who would like to go to the order?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Mr. Sullivan, you know, you speak, who would you like to... Okay, uh, we will now close for the present, and we will start at those, uh, those that are virtual. If we have anybody virtual who'd like to speak, you will have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And I have no screen in front of me, so I don't know who's calling. Okay, all right, uh, looks like, uh, we have nobody virtual, so the city will now disable all video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. And next we will move to committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met upstairs today at five o'clock. Update, which was sent out to everyone. Um, there was a couple of promotions recently with, uh, Austin Menius to maintenance worker three, and Corina Scott to permanent coordinator. Um, we had a fee schedule update in regards to meter testing. Uh, potentially there's going to be a fifty-dollar charge for leak testing in the future as they, the, uh, upwards of then, uh, inundated with, uh, people wanting to just find out how much water they're finding, or what, and it seems like it's over and over again. Uh, so potentially there will be a fifty-dollar charge, but if there was a leak found, uh, then that charge would be reversed. And then, uh, I have a session about the parking at Elmore Park, the fees, uh, is kind of an ongoing thing. Uh, the fee structure that they're currently looking at is, uh, four dollars for zero four hours, uh, generally in the months of May first to October first, and like ten dollars for all day. Also, they're looking at the cost for boat lunch. We got twenty dollars for a boat lunch, lunch in the kiosk, although, uh, city, uh, residents could still purchase a pass for forty dollars, they could launch it anytime. Yeah, that's looking to, uh, so we go on consent, uh, November twenty.
Oh, right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development Committee did meet on November seventh upstairs, public services at five o'clock. Yeah, several lines of interest included Resolution thirty-one-eighty-three, which, uh, is for hearing exam and services that was forwarded to this evening's agenda on community development issue. I probably have a reading of that, and if there's any questions on that, we're going to take them up then. Uh, also, the Resolution thirty-one-eighty-four is kind of a, you know, this contract amendment with, uh, some fancy, oh, I can't pronounce. Um, and that's on your, uh, community development, uh, committee issues tonight also for a full discussion. Also, Resolution thirty-one-eighty-six, which is for the lift station upgrade project, uh, standard kind of rehabilitation of lift station twenty out there, um, just rework on that thing. That was forwarded to the consent agenda of recommendation from the council, all committee. Also, uh, Resolution thirty-one-eighty-eight, which contracts with, uh, AK&amp;A, uh, construction management services for the same lift station twenty, but it's inspection people when they're doing those lift stations, it's a very specific amount of technical work that they do for inspection-wise because the coating that's put in there and everything, we want to make sure that that coating is in there properly so it doesn't, we do that, obviously. Um, also, Resolution thirty-one-ninety-one, the proposal for the new public safety generator was forwarded for approval this, um, and of course, everybody's aware of the generator for the, you know, public safety building, it was a little bit too small, they discovered, so they might as well get a larger one to operate that whole building over there. And that was our items of business that you...
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Uh, this actually reminds me, Madam Clerk, when I came to the building at about four-thirty, you know, about five o'clock, uh, one of the evenings, uh, on Tuesday, the doors were actually locked, and, um, and they would have to be open for, uh, for any member of public, any one of the community along with the, uh, the council. Have we solved that problem?
Yes, we have.
Yes, thank you. All right, the Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met today at three-thirty upstairs on the second floor. Uh, we had a report from East Pierce Fire and Rescue that came out in our packet. East Pierce Fire and Rescue Chief Parkinson was not present at the time. We did receive a report from Chief Barry with the Bonny Lake Police Department. We currently have three vacant positions after a sergeant retirement. One candidate is currently in background. Uh, overall, for the year, crime is down, calls for service are down. Uh, the only significant major jump is in juvenile crimes, uh, due to, uh, potentially due to car thefts. That's up about three hundred percent. Uh, traffic infractions are actually out, which is a sign of officers out there doing, emphasis patrols, uh, and people being kind enough to pull over and not drive away. Um, and then, uh, oh, and we had a report from the prosecutor's office. In October, there were four hundred and thirty-nine total hearings, twenty hours of body worn camera were reviewed, and they had forty-five arrangements, uh, arraignments. Uh, no emergency management report this, this month. We had a discussion on AB two-three-one-fifty-two, which was amending the code for animals at large. Uh, we kicked that back to, uh, the legal department for revision of some wording. Uh, we do have AB two-three-one-forty-eight, Resolution thirty-one-eighty-nine, uh, with the, uh, inter-agency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. That's on our consent agenda for tonight. And we have AB two-three-one-forty-nine, Resolution thirty-one-ninety, which is a contract for Indian Claw Jail, increase our beds to six guaranteed. Uh, that would be on the consent agenda for eleven-twenty-eight. Uh, we had a great update from our new community court case manager, Carla, and, uh, we didn't have much in open discussions. We review our minutes in the turn.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Chief, the beds of our Indian Claw, are they going to cost more than what we had them in, uh, Sundayville, I believe, or...
No, that's, we're, uh, we're locking those down, just like great big services in New York.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, and by the way, working in Lake, uh, in Lakewood now, I saw an East Pierce, uh, fire truck over there, so I know, I don't know where their jurisdiction ends, but they're going beyond their duty. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, uh, for, uh, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did we get a unanimous, oh, I, I hear we have a unanimous giggle, did we get a unanimous consent?
Just appreciate the feelings.
Who, who seconded?
All right, you do know who...
It was Kim.
Councilmember Swatman, did the, um, uh, moving, uh, item I off the consent agenda, is that a community development issue?
That goes under full council.
Okay, so that's full council, okay. Um, shall we take the full council issue first?
Let's go ahead and order community development first.
Okay, we have two community development committee issues. First, item, Madam Clerk.
This is item A, which is AB two-three-one-forty-two, Resolution thirty-one-eighty-three. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with law offices of Alex Sidle.
Sidle.
D O L C to provide hearing examiner services and appoint Alex Sidles as the Bonny Lake hearing examiner.
What are your motions? Say again. Okay, do we have any discussion on that?
Mayor?
Oh, uh, yes, Councilmember McLean.
I would like to, uh, just, uh, the council to consider that funding this, you know, will be for a period of one year, and at the end of that one year, this will come back. And in that time, I just would like to encourage the council to understand exactly what this is doing. Um, I'm, I'm kind of concerned that council clearly understands that we're abdicating our position as the arbiter, uh, of, of appeals, and we're delegating that to this, uh, uh, hearing examiner. Uh, and, and by so doing, we're effectively taking the last, making the last course of repress for citizens, uh, to a bureaucrat that is not elected from the, uh, elected, uh, council members, and, and I'm concerned about that, but I understand, uh, the argument that this is a complicated, uh, problem that deserves, uh, lots of consideration and understanding and determining the, and that sometimes a professional is, uh, better suited than the council. But I would also argue, on the other hand, that this is the last, uh, opportunity for elected, uh, members, elected officials to represent or to hear citizens and to, um, uh, serve the citizens. So, I'm very melancholy on this topic, but, you know, I think right now we, we're bound to work this, uh, to pay for a hearing examiner, but I would like, uh, the council to consider this and investigate that and clearly understand what their position is, uh, so that we, uh, could, uh, consider perhaps, um, uh, not having a hearing examiner in the future. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McLean. Is anybody, Councilmember Fullerton?
I just have a question. So, is that, um, is, is this going to, hearing examiner going to be somebody with contact then versus having, like, uh, a hea- hearing, like what we had tonight for the ordinances that we were looking at, where citizens can't approach us? So, well, so the hearing examiners only hear things that are quasi-judicial, not legislative. So, the budget hearing we had tonight is legislative. That's where council members can bring their own personal opinions, listen to the public, and make a political, you know, policy decisional budget. Hearing examiner work is really akin to a judge where they have to take the facts in front of them, uh, whether it's, say, it's an application for a subdivision, and then they have, uh, this body passed, um, and make a decision based on the facts. So, if someone is a party of interest or, um, is a neighbor and they're holding the hearing, they probably can come to the hearing examiner and give testimony and become a party to that. That, that's how that works. So, it's more of a judicial role. Um, the city created the hand, office of the hearing examiner back in nineteen ninety-five, and we had the same hearing examiner for a while, um, and then he needed to leave, leave the office so we, uh, you guys passed the, uh, agreement for Mr. Obrex as the hearing examiner, and he's been very, very busy. But we brought in Mr. Sidels as another hearing examiner because there's an appellate examiner, and we have two different offices. Um, and so the idea, you know, talking to the next agenda item as well, is that Mr. Sidels would do all the land use work and be the appellate examiner for, um, unfit dwellings, and Mr. Obrex would be the, uh, would hear appeals on both enforcement and unfit dwelling matters. Uh, Mr. Sidels is ten dollars an hour less than Mr. Obrex, so by bringing him in more, you know, and shifting some of the work to him, it'll be a little bit of a cost for the citizens. So, then, will that take away, um, our ability as elected officials to say, go have a meeting with Mr. John Stone or Mr. Sullivan if a code, um, comes up that citizens are contacting me about, uh, there's a code issue, so I can speak to them and get clarification? Is that going to take away that ability? No, and in fact, if you were to abolish the hearing examiner system and sit as judges on, for example, land use matters or code enforcement appeals, and there was an issue with a code that was part of one of those appeals, you would not be able to address that then because it would be considered a conflict of interest or a transference issue. If, if, you also wouldn't be able to make meetings with constituents. So, if you have a big project coming forward and you guys are sitting playing the role of hearing examiner as the council, and the members of the public have strong feelings about that, not only can they not come and testify except during the hearing if, if that, if it's not closed, but you can't, if they run into you at the grocery store and want to talk about that issue, you have to really kind of stiff on them and say, no, I can't talk to you. And then when you would be sitting here, you'd have to say, oh, Mrs. Pearson ran into me at the grocery store and she told me she didn't like such and such project. You have to disclose it on the diet. So, it's very uncomfortable, I have found, both as a council member myself for other jurisdictions and as a city attorney, for council members to sit as judges for quasi-judicial matters. There's only one exception, and that's rezones. By law, the council is the, because you guys control the zoning code, the council is the final decision-maker on rezones, but all the other land use matters, uh, most cities will have those go to the hearing examiner because it does separate you from your constituents if you are a citizen as the judge. And, and, uh, someone said to me recently, if you had a project and every single voter in Bonny Lake came in here and said, we don't like this project, and the code, it met the code, you couldn't say no. And that's a very uncomfortable thing because you want to serve your constituents, that's why you run for council. You don't want a citizen judge and just have to apply, be very narrow in applying the law to the facts. So, uh, for that reason, I, I think hearing examiners are far superior. They also reduce legal risk because it's very hard for council members to not bring their political lens and constituent lens to things, and then you have appeals and, you know, then you're being deposed and, you know, it's just, no, it's, it's far better to have a hearing examiner system is legal risk averse, it allows you to continue making policy and legislative, and not have to be separated from the people that...
Thank you for clarification.
All right, do we have any further discussion on that? Councilmember Baldwin.
So, did we have, uh, two different hearing examiners prior to the other individual leaving? Had we had a code enforcement, uh, hearing examiner, and then a regular Bonny Lake hearing examiner? It sounded like we had to replace somebody.
Yeah, so, so we've always had, we had a hearing examiner who's...
Yeah, so, so we've always had, we had a hearing examiner, his name was Dee. He retired after, I think, 30 or 40 years of being an hearing examiner. We signed a contract with a gentleman named Andrew Reeves on a one-year contract. For that year, he performed great. And then after about a year, the council gave him a four-year contract, and it went bad. For some things, I really can't talk about on the public record, but we had to terminate that contract. And so in doing so, it left us without a hearing examiner. And so Alex Sidels is to replace Andrew Reeves as the primary hearing examiner. In April this year, we created the offices of appellate hearing examiner. So the appellate hearing examiner could hear appeals from the hearing examiner on unfit dwelling units. And that was Phil Oberox. And we're wanting to, so that we can be more consistent and streamline sending all kinds of code enforcement appeals to Phil and all other land use matters and initial hearings on unfit dwellings to Alex.
Okay, so just to kind of filter through, there was one hearing examiner, and then now there's going to be two, but they're doing different, they're seeing different things.
We've had two since April.
Okay.
We're just having to replace Andrew Reeves with Alex Sidels, because we had to terminate it.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I'm checking. I'm thinking I'm terminating.
Yeah, so yeah, there is two, but we've had two since April, and we're kind of, so we can be more efficient and quick in getting things through the system. Because these hearing examiners are not just representing, they're not looking for the city of Watu Lake. They're working for, you know, numerous jurisdictions and counties. So finding times on their calendar gets tough, and so when you have two. And one big change between both contracts is we're no longer paying a monthly retainer. So actually going without Sidels, we're actually saving money from the contract that we had with Andrew Reeves, because there's not a monthly retainer. So we don't pay for the hearing examiner, unless we're actually physically using the service. And it's built either at a flat rate, so if there's a development proposal, that is built into their permit fee. If it's an appeal, sometimes that's just we're paying their hourly.
And just to clarify, Mr. Sullivan, because we're voting on this, this is not dealt one up. I mean, because we will have ostensibly two hearing examiners. Hearing examiners at the same time.
No.
We, and one is actually $10 plus an hour than the other ones, so we're actually, we'll be saving money.
Yeah, one will be hearing code enforcement appeals, so that all the code enforcement. He's been a hearing examiner for well over, I want to say almost 30 years. And he does the training for most of the other hearing examiners. So as we bring in really complicated legal matters about code enforcement and property rights and violation of the development, kind of having that type of expertise here of those hearings, because of the legal risk that the city attorney, we talked about, is great to have. And then having Alex do kind of the short plats or subdivisions and additional use permits is a good way of kind of divvying up those two systems.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. You've earned staying afterwards to explain to me how the contract sounds.
Yes.
Off the public record. Okay, do we have any further discussion, Councilmember?
Quick question, Jason. This will help with the Darrell Holmes we talked about in public safety? Or is that a county public hearing examiner?
No, that, what helped, the way, the way it would work is Alex Sidels would hear the initial hearing, and because he would be our primary hearing examiner. And then if there was an appeal, that it would be fast-tracked then to Phil Oberox to hear and oversee the decision issued by Alex, either way.
Okay.
And it's important to note, the city can appeal a hearing examiner decision. We are not bound to buy in. So if there's a decision of the hearing examiner that the council or the city does not support, we can always file an appeal to whatever the appeal body is of that decision.
I see. And would that be finality after that, or?
Finality, finality would not occur until it works out all the way through the support system.
Got you. All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the matter, Councilmember McLean?
So how many appeals have we had since April?
I think we have currently nine appeals pending on different code enforcement matters, not related to land use, not related to permitting, but code enforcement. I shouldn't have to pay my civil penalty. I shouldn't, I should, that's not a violation of the code. And they are questions of law, which is why I have an hearing examiner, because it's kind of the preferment.
All right, any further discussion? We're ready to move to a vote. Okay, all in favor of Resolution 3183? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, looks like Resolution 3183 has been voted unanimously. Next issue, Madam Court.
This is item B, which is AB23143, Resolution 3184. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign under my name to the contract with Albrecht and Associates, PLLC, related to hearing examiner services for code enforcement.
Hey, Councilmember Baldwin, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the matter? Pretty much the same as what we did with the last item. So all in favor of Resolution 3184? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, looks like Resolution 3184 has been voted unanimously. All right, let's move on to full council issues. We will, oh, that will be the former item I off of the consent agenda. Madam Court, would you read it with me?
This is AB23121, motion 23123? AB23123, sorry, go ahead, Ed. The council motion would be to cancel the December 19th, 2023 council workshop and community development committee meeting, and the January 2nd of 2024 council workshop and community development committee meeting.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, let's discuss it. Councilmember Swatman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, as my understanding, January 2nd is holiday, but it'd be a workshop day, and I think we're going to have to meet council members, at least. I would think it would be appropriate if, you know, for us to meet as a council to just, it was idle chit-chat or whatever it was, I just don't want to necessarily give up a workshop day. Well, somebody, a bunch of people would get on holiday.
Deputy Mayor, do we have a agenda building up for a workshop?
I am not aware.
It would hurt.
So you don't have anything building on that day's projected agenda? The city itself is closed on the 25th, the 26th, the 1st, and December is the month that staff has to take it or lose it, their vacation time. So a lot of staff are not available working during December. So January's 2nd meeting isn't going to have anything. I have scheduled the following week to do all the committee.
Yeah.
This hearing will be done in December, the last December meeting.
Oh, the last December meeting for next year?
Right, the new ones. I just don't, you know, again, the two new council members. Yeah, you know, obviously, there's not staff-driven stuff. Is there going to be council-driven stuff? The councils come on and talk about workshop levels.
There's not going to be anything, they're going to be gone on January 1st, because that is the holidays. And then the next day, you know, that means that they're going to have to have their, our agenda made up for that workshop by, before the, yeah, the 19th, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Or actually, the 14th.
Sure, it's just, you know, if there's any open discussion except that the council needs the new councilor.
That's true.
And it's definitely, I don't want to pre-cancel a CDC meeting, because I don't know what point. And so if the council doesn't want to be the full council, I would just, I would, you know, move to remove the CDC cancellation on January 1st.
Would CDC meeting on the 1st?
Second. Moving to cancel the CDC meeting?
Not canceling the January 2nd. You can cancel it 24 hours before.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin?
Let's be honest, nobody's head is in the game on January 2nd. And so I will not be in support of, you know, going backwards on this. I'm okay with canceling the January 2nd.
Well, I can challenge that, honestly, because my head, my head is perfectly clear on January 2nd. All right, Councilmember Evans?
I too recommend and support not having that. In fact, I plan on not attending any council meetings.
Oh, you know, I'm just, I would move to, move the CDC cancel.
No.
Well, it's not really up to the council, frankly, you know, it's.
Up to the chairman?
Yeah.
This motion, so I would second your motion, and I can remove it.
Yeah.
31 CDC?
Not on January 2nd.
So don't we need to make appointments also for our committees that we would need to make appointments?
We can have stand-ins, like we always do, the deputy mayor is available to stand in or anybody else. But like I said, there's not necessarily going to be any men, because normally the committee members, you know, do their own committee stuff at that point. They can cancel 24 hours before, or.
And that, you know.
And to have the cancellation, we'll need that also.
Sure.
For.
Oh, we do that on the last December, also determine deputy mayor of the council committees. But I thought that we were being sworn in on the last meeting of.
They're being sworn in, but I have it scheduled for our first actual meeting the following week, not second, but the next Tuesday, to vote in the deputy mayor and then the committee chair.
So that would not be a workshop, it would be a council?
You mentioned January 9th? I would expect to have a happy birthday song with that council meeting.
Is it just a council number?
Absolutely, Councilmember Baldwin. We will do that. Armored shout, "For朕!"
We see the motion to.
Okay, I believe we have the motion. We've had it second. Is there any discussion on the matter? I believe we've had it. So all in favor of removing the CDC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is so moved. Now we can move on to the general motion. All in favor of the motion, I have it, is N3121.
Okay.
All in favor of canceling the city council meeting? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one. Yeah, all right, we will now go into a closed session for 20 minutes per RC742-3011, to discuss the centralization with action, to, with action.
We're going to go through it though.
Okay, so that one's paused. Is that because she's going to be tall now? Thanks for curbing me, Tom. Thanks for curving me tall.
I mean, yeah.